Good morning, everyone, and welcome again to our Bible study of the Book of Revelation. And we want to welcome our online listeners. Thank you very much for joining us each week, and we hope you're enjoying it as we are here. Just let's have a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you are the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, and we would pray this morning that you would give unto us the Spirit of wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of Jesus, that the eyes of our understanding would be enlightened, that we might know what is the hope of his calling, and what the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints, and what is the exceeding greatness of his power to us who believe according to the working of his mighty power. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Well, just a little quick review. Chapter 16 was the Battle of Armageddon. We talked about that in chapter 16. But chapters 17 and 18, I mentioned last week, are kind of background information about perhaps why the Battle of Armageddon took place. And then in chapter 17 last week, we had the downfall of the one-world religion, the false prophet who heads that up. We had his downfall. Remember, the beast and the false prophet was riding on top of this animal, the beast? And then the beast in chapter 17 said that he didn't want this anymore. And the Antichrist is on his own now. He doesn't want any help. He used religion to get him popular. He got the people all around the world to take the mark of the beast, the 666, and so on, and so on. The false prophet made everybody worship this idol. But then when he reached the peak of his popularity, he said to the false prophet, to the one-world religion, "I don't need you anymore. I'm on my own. I'm the dictator of the world. I'm the Antichrist kind of thing." So today, in chapter 18, we are going to see the downfall of the Antichrist's political system, his one-world government. We're going to see that today as we start chapter 18. And I'm going to be reading this morning from the New Living version, so you might not be able to follow it. Maybe it might be even better just to listen because this is a little different. The New Living translation is just a little bit easier perhaps to understand. Okay, chapter 18. "After all this," that's that metatata, "again in the future, I saw another angel come down from heaven with great authority, and the earth grew bright with his splendor." Can you imagine an angel so powerful and so great that the earth grew bright? Imagine. "With his splendor, he gave a mighty shout. Babylon is fallen. That great city is fallen. She has become a home for demons." And remember, we mentioned that Babylon in the New Testament is a symbol of sinful humanity. In John's day, of course, it meant the city of Rome in Italy, because John didn't know of another city as great and powerful as Rome. But now, in the rest of the New Testament, it becomes a symbol of just sinful humanity. And so she has become a home for demons. In other words, the world we're living in and will be living in at this time will really be a demonic place, which is not good news. "She is a hideout for every foul spirit, a hideout for every foul vulture, and every foul and dreadful animal, for all the nations have fallen." In this chapter, we're going to have four voices, okay? This voice is of a mighty angel, okay? This first voice. And it's the voice of condemnation, verses 2 and 3. Look at verse 3. "For all the nations have fallen," okay? In this Battle of Armageddon, "because of the wine of her passionate immorality. The kings of the world have committed adultery with her." Now, remember last week, we talked about the word fornication and adultery, and we came up with the Greek pornous, which we get the word pornography from. Remember that? I mentioned that. Idol worship, witchcraft, the occult. Imagine, "The kings of the world have committed adultery with her because of her desires for extravagant luxury. The merchants of the world have grown rich." Okay, this is the voice. There's four voices. This is the first one, the voice of condemnation. "The people are living in luxury, feeling no need for God." Someone once said to me, "Why should I pray over my food? I worked hard this week. I made some money. I bought the food myself. Why should I pray and thank God for my food?" I was really shocked by that. I thought, if God didn't give you the strength and didn't cause your heart to beat, you wouldn't work a second. You would be dead in your tracks. You need to thank God that you had the strength to work this week." Something like that, yeah. Okay, so this is how, this is the feeling. Business and governments are often based on greed and money and power. And this is where we Christians, we have to have another value system. Our value system can't be based on greed and money and power. Ours should be based on service and giving and self-sacrificing and obedience and truth. This is our value system. The world is completely different from ours. And you can see that. You don't have to talk very long to somebody to know where their value system is. And so here we are. This is the first voice. Okay, now the next voice. "Then I heard another voice calling from heaven." Now, these angels or voices are coming from angels. This is the voice of separation. Just listen, please, to this one, starting with verse 4. "Then I heard another voice calling from heaven. 'Come away from her, my people. Do not take part in her sins, or you will be punished with her; for her sins are piled as high as heaven, and God remembers her evil deeds. Do to her as she has done to others, double her penalty for all her evil deeds.' She brewed a cup of terror." Imagine, she brewed a cup of terror for others. "So brewed twice as much for her. She glorified herself and lived in luxury, so match it now with torment and sorrow. She boasted in her heart, 'I am queen on my throne. I am no helpless widow, and I have no reason to mourn.' Therefore," now, this is so important, "these plagues will overtake her in a single day: death, and mourning, and famine. She will be completely consumed by fire, for the Lord God, who judges her, is mighty." This is a terrible, really a terrible verse that really speaks of God's judgment on the world, on the Antichrist, on his... And it tells us, church, "Come away. Come away from this worldly, worldly system. Don't have any part to do with it." God will judge the sins of the world. And this New Living Bible here has a comment. I'd like to read the commentary for verses 4 to 8, this separation. "The people of Babylon," the world system, "had lived in luxury and pleasure. The city boasted, 'I am queen on my throne. I have no reason to mourn.' The powerful, wealthy people of this world are susceptible to this same attitude. A person who is financially comfortable often feels invulnerable, secure, and in control, feeling no need for God or anyone else. This kind of attitude defies God. I don't need God. And his judgment against it is harsh. We are told to avoid Babylon's sins. If you are financially secure, don't become complacent and deluded by the myth of self-sufficiency. Use your resources to help others and advance God's kingdom." That's the commentary. And I thought that was so good for us to be reminded. It's very easy to get caught up in this worldly system. "Oh, I think you need to buy this. I think you need this. I'd like to have this." And you can just, you just can go on and on and on. And so in verse 9, we start the voice of lamentation now. This is the business people. These are the business people. Listen now to this. "And the kings of the world, who committed adultery," that's idol worship with her, "and enjoyed her great luxury, will mourn for her as they see the smoke rising from her charred remains." Because God's going to burn up all this business, all this kind of thing. "They will stand at a distance, terrified by great torment. They will cry out..." Now, here's the voice of lamentation. "How terrible! How terrible for you, oh Babylon, you great city!" City of Rome, the earthly, worldly cities of our world. "In a single moment," okay, here's the second time, in verse 8, "therefore the plagues will overtake her in a single day." Now here again, "in a single moment." That's how fast God is going to judge the wickedness of our world. "In a single moment, God's judgment came on you." Okay, what does that remind you of? Could it be like a stock market crash? In a single moment, the stocks all fell? Could it be the fall of the dollar? Money system falling? "In a single moment." We're talking about the economy now. So this is an economic downturn, real fast though. "In a single moment, God's judgment came on you." Verse 11. "The merchants of the world will weep and mourn for her." These are the business people. "For there is no one left to buy their goods." Yeah, who's going to buy their stuff now? She bought great quantities. I want you to listen carefully. To what? Luxury. Okay, this is luxury. These are not necessities. Just listen. She, the business world, the rich, bought great quantities of gold, silver, jewels, and pearls, fine linen, purple silk, scarlet cloth, things made of fragrant thyme wood, ivory goods, and objects made of expensive wood, and bronze, iron, and marble. She also bought cinnamon, spice, incense, myrrh, frankincense, wine, olive oil, fine flour, wheat, cattle, sheep, horses, chariots, and... Can you imagine this next one? "And bodies." That is, human slaves. Can you imagine? This is the list of merchandise. This is extreme materialism, okay? Extreme materialism of the society. Few of these goods are necessities in order to keep body and soul together, like rice or potatoes or whatever. This is extreme necessities, luxuries. And historians say that in the Roman Empire at John's time, there were 60 million slaves that were bought. 60 million? Can you imagine slaves? But on the other hand, how many people today are enslaved to debt? Don't you think debt could be something you're enslaved to? This could be also in our day-to-day. We also have human trafficking, which is so terrible. So, so terrible of human bodies, human beings, and so on, being sold because of poverty and so on like that. But notice, these merchants are feeling sorry for themselves. In verse 14. "The fancy things you love so much are gone, they cry. All your luxuries and splendor are gone forever, never to be yours again." Verse 15. "The merchants, who became wealthy by selling her these things, will stand at a distance, terrified by her great torture." The merchants, the business people, will stand shocked when the economy falls, when there's an economic crash, stock market crash, or whatever. "And they will weep and cry out." Why? They're not crying for the city. They're not crying for these factories and so on. They're crying for themselves. "How terrible! How terrible for that great city! She was clothed in finest purple and scarlet linens, decked out with gold and precious stones and pearls." Here again, verse 17. "In a single moment," that's the third time we've had that. "In a single moment," we had it in verse 8, we have it in verse 10, and now in verse 17. "In a single moment, all the wealth of the city is gone." Wow. I tell you folks, when God begins to start judging us, the world, that, you know, we're going to be gone. Thank the Lord. Hopefully, we'll all be in heaven. But when he starts to judge, it's going to be shocking. Everything is going to be done so fast, in a single moment, in a single day, so on, so forth. "And all the captains of the merchant ships, and their passengers, and sailors, and crews, will stand at a distance. They will cry out as they watch the smoke ascend, and they will say, 'Where is there another city as great as this?'" "And they will weep and throw dust on their heads to show their grief. And they will cry out, 'How terrible! How terrible for that great city! The ship-owners became wealthy by transporting her great wealth on the seas.'" Now, again, "in a single moment, it is all gone. In a single moment, it is all gone." You know, we must put boundaries on our desires. And there's a note here, because I suppose in a way, I sense this maybe more than you do. Coming from a country that's poverty. The Philippines is perhaps known as a poor country, and it is. And the poverty is great. Beggars all the time along the roads, mothers, grandmothers begging for a little bit of money. It broke my heart, especially to see the children begging. Oh, I could hardly take it. Anyway, now, to come from there and come back here, you know, it's really a shock. But I noticed here in the commentary, how can we as Christians keep ourselves from getting involved in this extreme luxury and in this materialism, buying, buying, constantly buying? Okay, the commentary says, "How can a person keep away from the evil system?" This is, this city that's falling, like John said, it was like the city of Rome, but it's the evil system that we're living under. Number one, people must always be more important than products. People must always be more important than materialism, eh? Number two, keep away from pride in your own programs, plans, and successes. Number three, remember that God's will and God's word must never be compromised. Never be compromised. Number four, people must always be considered above the making of money. Oh, it's so sad to think of parents saying to their children, "Look, I have no time for you. I got to go to work today. I got to make money. I'm sorry, you got to stay at home. Or I can't go to the ballgame with you because I'm busy making money," or whatever, you know? I mean, this is so sad. People must always be, human beings must always be above the making of money. Number five, do what is right, no matter what the cost. You choose what is right. And number six, be involved in businesses that provide worthwhile products or services, not just things that feed the world's desires, just not the luxuries. Be involved. If you need to be involved in business, be involved in business that provide worthwhile products. And there's a lot of good businesses. You know, I'm not against business. Of course, we have to have products. We have to have things. But we must be careful that we don't get involved in the making of all these things that are listed here, that John listed, that involve that city. Okay, now, in verse 20, the fourth voice is the voice of celebration. And I'm sure you can guess who is singing this. Verse 20. "Rejoice over her fate, oh heaven, and people of God, and apostles and prophets; for at last, finally, God has judged her for your sakes." Do you remember that was, was it in chapter 6? The martyrs were saying, "How long, oh God? How long until you avenge our deaths? When are you going to get even with those people who beheaded us, who killed us?" Here it is. Here it is. "For at last, God has judged her for your sakes." That's, I think, chapter 6. Verse 21. "Then a mighty angel picked up a boulder the size of a huge millstone." Okay, what is this millstone? What does it symbolize? It symbolized, this angel is picking up this huge millstone that weighs a lot, and he throws it into the ocean. He throws it. This represents total destruction, total destruction of the world. Just like this, the great city Babylon will be thrown down with violence and will never be found again. The sound of harps, singers, flutes, and trumpets will never be heard in you again. No craftsmen and no trades will ever be found in you again. The sound of the mill will never be heard in you again. So here, we have almost five times in verse 8, in a single day, in verse 10, in a single moment, in verse 17, in a single moment, in verse 19, in a single moment, and then the throwing. How fast would that angel throw that millstone into the ocean? It would just be no time. It's going to be quick. When judgment hits, it is going to be fast. And it's, there's going to be again this terrible, terrible pouring out of God's wrath on his people. Verse 23. "The light of a lamp will never shine in you again." This is referring to Babylon, to the world system. "The happy voices of brides and grooms will never be heard in you again; for your merchants were the greatest in the world," in returns of materialism and economy and so on. "And you deceived the nations." This is so important. "You deceived the nations with your sorceries." The word, we get the word drugs from sorceries, drugs. And hasn't drug addiction kind of taken over? It's amazing, the people. Even in our own town, we have a store that sells drugs in our own small town. I'm shocked. Every time I go by there, I say, "Lord, shut this building down." Every time. It's part of the occult, eh? Drugs are part of the occult. And so here we have this terrible. "They deceived the nations with your sorceries. And you deceived the nations with your sorceries. In your streets flowed the blood of the prophets and of God's holy people, and the blood of people slaughtered all over the world." There's a terrible killing of Christians around the world now. Oh, it's just shocking, the way Christians are being killed right now. So I can't imagine what it will be like at this particular time. But it's going to be really a very, very terrible time in our world altogether. Okay, now, in chapter 19, we have here the Song of Victory in Heaven. And this is wonderful. I'm so glad that bad, heavy stuff is over, okay? And now we're getting to the end of the book. And here in chapter 19, we have the Song of Victory. And for those who believe in post-tribulation, this is when it takes, takes over, the post-tribulation theory of Christ's coming. Verse 19, again, "after these things," again, this is the metatata again of the Hebrew, the Greek. "I heard that sound like a vast crowd in heaven shouting." Okay, now, here's the good shouting here, okay? Now, this is after chapter 16. This is not after chapter 18. Chapter 16, we had the defeat of the Antichrist, okay? Remember that? We had the defeat in chapter 16, at the end of chapter 16. Okay, so now, chapter 19 follows chapter 16, okay? Now, when they see that the Antichrist has been caught and thrown into the bottomless pit, now, this is what is happening. And this vast crowd, when they see this, they begin to say, "Praise the Lord! Salvation and glory and power belong to our God. His judgments are true and just. He has punished the great prostitute, the Roman Empire, the evil materialistic society, who corrupted the earth with her immorality. He has avenged the murder of his servants, the martyrs, who were, he has avenged them." And again, their voices rang out, "Praise the Lord! The smoke from that city ascends forever and ever." Okay, now in verse 4. "Then the twenty-four elders," remember them, "at the throne, and the four living beasts fell down and worshipped God, who was sitting on the throne. They cried out, 'Amen! Praise the Lord!'" And from the throne came a voice that said, "Praise our God, all his servants, all who fear him, from the least to the greatest." Yeah, this is praise and worship to God. "Then I heard again that sound, like the sound of a vast crowd." That's all of us. We're in this vast crowd. Or the roar of a mighty ocean waves, or the crash of loud thunder. "Praise the Lord! For the Lord our God, the Almighty, reigns. Let us be glad and rejoice, and let us give honor to him; for the time has come for the wedding feast of the Lamb, and his bride has prepared herself." This is the marriage supper of the land. She has been given the finest of pure white... "She has been given the finest of pure white linen to wear." Okay, here, here's this marriage supper of the, of the lamb. Now, for us who are going by the, uh, the pre-tribulation, uh, the rapture taking place at the beginning of chapter four, we are in heaven with Christ, and we are partaking of this verse eight, okay? "She has been given the finest of pure white linen to wear, for the fine linen represents the good deeds of God's holy people." So this is the marriage, the wedding feast of the lamb, and we are wearing this white linen. And I think it's, eh, the commentary says, the white linen, of, white linen represents the good deeds of believers during their lifetime. And I heard a pastor, I heard a pastor say some time ago, and I thought it was very interesting. Okay, we are given white linen material. Okay, we're given white linen to wear. This white lin, linen represents the good deeds that we have done during our lifetime. And this pastor in, in this church was saying, "I'm afraid a lot of people in my church are not gonna have very much linen to wear because they, they haven't helped in the church. They haven't offered to do Sunday School, or children's ministry, or, you know, they, Samaritan's Purse, no. You know, they don't do anything, they, me, just me. I'm gonna take care of my family, my life." And so he said, "I'm afraid that they're gonna be very skimpy, um, clothes that will be worn, worn at this time." If it's white linen representing the good deeds of, of what the people. And I thought that was so funny, it just struck me really funny, I don't know why. But, um, anyway, let, let's keep doing good deeds, as long as God gives us life. Sixty years, seventy years, eighty years, however, let's keep doing good deeds. You know, and these good deeds don't have to be, you don't have to be a missionary, go somewhere, no, no, no. You know, I was really touched, I think it was in February. It was a very cold day, very cold day. And someone came to my, uh, place where I live, and she had a, a, a dish with about eight muffins on it. And I thought, "Oh my word, it was such a blessing." It was a cold day, I didn't wanna go out, didn't wanna go anywhere. And here this person came with a, a plate of muffins. That's a good deed, you know? And making a bowl of soup for somebody who's not feeling well. You know, I mean, we all have a talent or ability. Now, if I made muffins, no one would eat them, but, you know, some people, you know, some people have a gift, they have for cooking or something like that, whatever. Eh, eh, you know, it's just a good deed, you know? Uh, th- this kind of thing. All right, so let's remember that. Number, verse nine, okay? "And the angel said to me, 'Write this: Blessed are those who are invited to the wedding feast of the Lamb.' And he added, 'These are true words that come from God.'" Isn't that a wonderful thing? "Then I fell down at his feet." Now here's precious John, he's eighty years old approximately, eh? He's around eighty. And he is so overwhelmed by these angels shouting, and all these people in heaven shouting, "Praise the Lord!" He falls down at his feet to worship him. But the, the, he said, the angel said, "Don't, no, don't worship me. I am a servant of God, just like you and your brothers and sisters, who testify about their faith in Jesus. Worship only God, for the essence of prophecy is to give a clear witness for Jesus." "Don't worship me," the angel says. Christ alone must be worshiped. Christ is the theme of this book. And, uh, and so now it switches. The vision switches. And we're going to have at verse 11, a rider on the white horse. And of course, that's Christ. "Then I saw heaven open, and a white horse was standing there. Its rider was named Faithful and True, for he judges fairly and wages a righteous war. His eyes were like flames of fire." Now, we saw that in verse, in the first chapter, didn't we? Meaning judgment, fire means judgment. "And on his head were many crowns, meaning he's going to rule the world. A name was written on him that no one understood except himself." There are some things that we just can't comprehend or understand. And whatever he is calling himself, we can't grasp it. "He wore a robe dipped in blood, and his title was 'The Word of God.'" Dipped in blood, in the, uh, to understand this better, we need to kind of look into the, uh, Old Testament. Isaiah, if, if you have time to read Isaiah, uh, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, this week or next week. Because Isaiah really, and Isaiah sixty-three says, "Who is this who comes from Eden, from the city of Basra, with his clothes stained red? Who is this in royal robes, marching in great strength? It is I, the Lord, announcing your salvation. It is I, the Lord, who has power to save. Why are your clothes so red, as if you were, had been treading out grapes? I have been treading the winepress alone. No one was there to help me. In my anger, I have trampled my enemies, as if they were grapes." This is the Battle of Armageddon. "In my fury, I have trampled my foes. Their blood has stained my clothes." So whose blood is on Jesus, this white, riding on the white horse? "Their blood has stained my clothes, for the time has come for me to avenge my people, to ransom them from their oppressors. I was amazed to see that no one intervened to help the oppressed. So I myself stepped in to save them with my strong arm, and my wrath sustained me. I crushed the nations in my anger, and made them stagger and fall to the ground, spilling their blood upon the earth." What did we say about the Battle of Armageddon? Armageddon, for a hundred and eighty miles, they were, we said the blood maybe flowed? And so, um, uh, this is truly a terrible time, but that's, in verse 13, "He wore a robe dipped in blood, and his title was 'The Word of God.' The armies of heaven, dressed in the finest of pure white linen, followed him on white horses." Verse 15, "From his mouth came a sharp sword to strike down the nations." Imagine, from his mouth, this is not a fight. All he has to do is speak a word, and they're defeated, they're destroyed. This is not a battle. "And his title was 'The Word of God.'" Verse 14, "The armies of heaven, dressed in the pure white linen, followed him on white horses." And some say that is us, as believers, we will follow Christ when he comes in the second coming. We will be with him. "From his mouth came a sharp sword to strike down the nations. He will rule them with an iron rod. He will release the fierce wrath of God, the Almighty, like juice flowing from a winepress. On his robe, at his thigh, was written this title, 'King of kings and lord of lords.'" Isn't that a wonderful, um, uh, title for him? And now, and this is what we have here, we have the, the, uh, the robe and the sword being his, a word from his mouth. And I'd like to read here a little bit of the commentary for verses nineteen to twenty-one. I'll just read them first, and then I'll read the commentary. "Then I saw the beast," that's the Antichrist, "and the kings of the world." Those are the nations that are following the Antichrist. "And their armies gathered together to fight against the one sitting on the horse and his army. And the beast, the Antichrist, was captured, and with him the false prophet, who did mighty miracles on behalf of the beast, miracles that deceived all who had accepted the mark of the beast and who worshipped his statue. Both the beast and his false prophet were thrown alive, alive, into the fiery lake of burning sulfur. Their entire army was killed by the sharp sword that came from the mouth of the one riding the white horse." He just had to speak a word from his mouth. And all the armies of the Antichrist and the two hundred million from the east were killed. And all the vultures all gorged themselves on the dead bodies. This is what the commentary says, and I just would like to read this to you. "The battle lines have been drawn. The greatest confrontation in the history of the world is about to begin. The Antichrist and the false prophet have gathered the governments and armies of the earth under the Antichrist's rule. The enemy armies believe they have come on their own volition. In reality, God has summoned them to the battle in order to defeat them. There really is no fight, however, because the victory was won when Jesus died on the cross. Isn't that a wonderful thing? For sin and rose from the dead. Thus the evil leaders are immediately captured and sent to their punishment, and the forces of evil are annihilated. The fiery lake of burning sulfur is the final destination of the wicked. The Antichrist and the false prophet are thrown into the fiery lake. Then their leader, Satan himself, will be thrown into the lake, and finally, death and the grave have, uh, will be thrown. Afterward, everyone whose name is not recorded in the Book of Life will be thrown into the lake of fire." The Book of Life, and in Malachi, the Book of Malachi gives us an, an idea of this. Malachi, chapter three and verse sixteen. "Then those who feared the Lord spoke with each other, and the Lord listened to what they said. In his presence a scroll of remembrance was written, to record the names of those who feared him and always thought about the honor of his name, a book of remembrance." The Antichrist, the false prophet are cast alive into the lake of fire. There's no fight, it's all over. Satan will be bound. In chapter twenty, Satan will be bound. The question is, eh, I'm wondering, why, why? Do we have chapters seventeen and eighteen? The Antichrist and false prophet and ten governments and Antichrist rule and come against national Israel. Why do they come against Israel? Why are these armies coming against Israel? There's just some ideas here, and I'm just gonna throw them out. There, perhaps one idea is that they will blame Israel, the God of Israel, for all these tribulations. The seven seal judgments, the seven trumpet judgments, and now the seven bowl judgments. They will blame the God of Israel for that. And therefore, they will, um, come against, it'll be like anti-Semitism, you know, against the Jewish people. The hatred for the Jews will be so great that these armies will come against them to this Battle of Armageddon. That's one thought. Another thought is, the kings of the east, uh, maybe are coming against the Antichrist because they don't like his rule. Under his rule, the economy has been destroyed. The political system has been restored, rest, destroyed. The religious system has been, the one world religious destroyed. And so it could be that the, he is being attacked by these, the kings of the east to destroy the Antichrist. And they're meeting, because the Antichrist now has set himself up in Jerusalem. He's put his abomination of desolation in the temple, and wants everybody to worship him there. And so it could be that these armies are coming to destroy the Antichrist, actually. So there's different theories about that, different ideas about that. Uh, why they, they would come to this kind of, uh, but, uh, the anti-Semitic, uh, theme is that, perhaps that they are blaming the Jews for this terrible, terrible judgment that has come upon the world. But we know that it's God. And God protects his people. And the Jews flee to Petra or somewhere and are protected. But there, this is a great battle, and, um, we know that Christ only has to speak a word. Only has to speak a word. And the enemy's, the sword of, the word of God. And he is destroyed. We have a few minutes remaining. I'll just perhaps start chapter twenty. We're almost, we're coming to the good parts of the book now. We're, we're, we're over the, 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 uh, the difficult, hard parts. But we're coming now, um, to the, the more exciting and wonderful parts. And this is the millennium, the one thousand years, when Christ sets up his earthly kingdom with his resurrected saints. Uh, it will be a worldwide display of Christ's glory. It will be a reign of peace on earth. And the answer to our prayer, "Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth." This prayer will be answered now, chapter twenty. "Then I saw an angel coming down from heaven with the key to the bottomless pit and a heavy chain in his hand." Have you noticed how much the angels are, are involved in, in this whole thing? Angel after angel. He sees the dragon, that old serpent, who is the devil and Satan. So this one angel comes down and grabs a hold of Satan and bound him in chains for a thousand years. The angel threw him into the bottomless pit, which he then shut and locked, so Satan could not deceive the nations anymore until, until the thousand years were finished. Afterward, he must be released for a little while. Now, Satan is bound not as punishment, but so that he won't deceive the, the nations anymore. And so that's why he is bound. This is not punishment yet. Now, in verse four, "These are the people saved during the, uh, tribulation. Then I saw thrones, and the people sitting on them had been given the authority to judge. And I saw the souls of those who had been beheaded for their testimony about Jesus and for proclaiming the word of God." These are the people that were killed during the tribulation period. "They had not worshipped the beast or his statue, nor accepted his mark on their forehead or on their hands. They all came to life again, and they reigned with Christ for a thousand years." and they reigned with Christ for a thousand years." How Lindsey says, "During the tribulation, the inhabitants of the earth will include us who have been glorified before, taken up before, plus these people, these people who have been killed during the tribulation, and we will be kings and priests unto God." So, we are the inhabitants of the earth during the millennial period, this one thousand years. We will be kings and priests unto God. So, and so, these people, plus all of us that are in heaven, these glorified saints, these are people that will be there at this time. Verse five, "This is the first resurrection." So, these people came to life who were killed during the tribulation, and they reigned with Christ for a thousand. This is the first resurrection. Let me just stop here for a minute. The first resurrection includes Christ's resurrection. He died, he rose again. Also, if you remember in Matthew twenty-seven, when Christ rose from the dead, there were a number of Old Testament saints that came alive, and they were raised, these people, from the Old Testament. Then, thirdly, the dead Christians throughout the centuries, like, for example, my parents, your parents, and so on, so on. These are people who have died, and now, they are in this first resurrection. "The trumpets sound will sound, and the dead in Christ will rise first; then we who are alive and remain will be caught up." Okay, so, we're in this room. These are the raptured believers in there, and then, those who have been martyred for their testimony during the tribulation. These are the people in the first resurrection. So, we're in there. We will, if the rapture takes place this very soon, we will be in that group, the first resurrection. Okay, now, let's go on. They, this is the first resurrection. "The rest of the dead did not come back to life until the thousand years had ended," okay? The rest of the dead, because they are the wicked, huh? "Blessed and holy are those who share in the first resurrection; for them the second death has no power." The second death is for the wicked, those who will die in their sin. "But they will be priests of God and of Christ, and will reign with him a thousand years." This is the wonderful thing about this, this first resurrection. And verse seven talks about, "When the thousand years came to an end, Satan will be let out of his prison. He will go to deceive the nations called Gog and Magog." Now, this thousand years, there will be people born, and I know this is, this perhaps is difficult, but, okay. During the tribulation, remember, we said many, many will die. They will be beheaded, they'll be killed. But some will live through it, and they won't take the mark. They won't take the mark. We're praying it'll be, if you have relatives or friends, we pray that they won't, that they can escape that. And it's those people in the tribulation that will go into the millennial period of one thousand years. And they will, they will not have the glorified body that we have, we will have. When we're raptured, we have a body like Christ. But these people are still just normal human beings. They will get married, and they will have children for one thousand years. They will get married, they will have children. And again, if you will read Isaiah sixty-five, sixty-six, you will have a good idea of what, how long life is going to last in this period. And then, but the thing is, even though this millennium is a place of, there's no devil, there's no temptation, there's no war, it's peace on earth, it's just wonderful. Everything is wonderful. Still, these children that are born to these parents will rebel. You can't imagine, I can't imagine, I mean, here, we would think, "Oh, wouldn't it be wonderful to be without sin?" And they will be without sin. But in their hearts, they have not chosen Christ as their Lord and Savior. They were raised, let's say, in a Christian home, and, well, Jesus is the King of Kings. Yeah, okay, we worship Him, or we expect that, or we look to Him. But they do not, you know, fall down and worship Him from their hearts. And when Satan is loosed for a little while, they'll say, "Oh, wow, here's another option. Yeah, you want me to take drugs? You want me to murder, to kill? Yeah, that's different. I've lived under peace for so long." I mean, I can't imagine the thinking. I'm trying to, but, and these children, and their children, and so on, so forth, they will revolt against the Lord, you know, at that time. And we'll continue this next week. I guess our time is up now. So, we'll continue it next week, but let's just close in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we're so thankful again for your word, which is teaching us and helping us to live the way we should live as Christians in our world. Again, we pray for those of our relatives and families who have not accepted you, really. They're not passionately loving you and following you. We pray for a great move of your Holy Spirit into their lives that we might all be ready for the trumpet sound and for the rapture of the church. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.